Okay, time to order the Livingston zoning commission meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And now we will do our roll call.
Vice Chair Monahan?
Here.
Wendy Weaver?
I'm here.
But the cellus?
Yeah.
Mike Washtelak?
Yep.
Okay, and Jim Berg is, the chair is excused.
Have a forum.
We have a forum.
Moving on, we will look at the approval of minutes from March twentieth.
Let's see.
If everyone had a chance to review those and are there any items that need to be edited?
April? No, 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 no.
Oh, April eleventh, my apologies.
I can't look at a copy to see who's was here because.
He was about to minutes.
Jim was in attendance.
Jim, Michael, Wendy, and Mike. So really, it was just me. Yeah, so, um, so you cannot vote, but if you want, somebody else wants to make a motion.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve when minutes of the April eleventh twenty-three meeting?
They're in the packet. Um. Oh, yeah, second page. So the people that basically, Michael, Wendy, or Michael, could make a motion since you were all here. Same motion to approve by the cellus.
And put it to vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Got it. There you go.
Next, we will open up for general public comments. Do we have any public on the Zoom?
We have, let's see. Uh, looks like, um, two people not on the zoning commission are on, on, in the Zoom meeting. Does call for public comments, um?
Nothing?
Uh-uh. Looks like we're good.
Okay. Um, so we are to move on to new business, which is the review and recommendation of chapter thirty PUD ordinance.
Um. Uh, Wendy, can you see this at home? I'm sharing my screen. It's a.
Yes.
PowerPoint, okay. And I'm not sure how to get this into presentation mode, so I'm just gonna stick with this. It's not, it doesn't work the same. It was just PowerPoint. Um. One thing I wanted to bring up before I get into this, uh, is that, as you will have noticed, um, there's the exact section of chapter thirty that this will be in, has not been identified yet, uh, that will be between now and moving forward to city commission. Um, there's a couple of other places in the draft ordinance where there's a placeholder highlighting for the section of code. Uh, the formatting of this ordinance, to be consistent, what with, what is already in our code is, is gonna happen between now and when it moves forward to the city commission. We just literally, I didn't have time, sorry. Um, so, yeah, so this is, um, plan unit development ordinance, just kind of a recap. I think you all know this. It's, um, it went before zoning commission in April and went before planning board May, um, for comments, inputs, um, questions, uh, and this is sort of what has come out of it. So, um, just a reminder, and we've sort of clarified it a little more, I think, um, in the ordinance, and I'm just hitting the highlights on here. Um, you know, the, the intent of the PUD, it's, it's, it's in the growth policy. Uh, one of the recommendations is for the city to explore, um, developing a planned unit development ordinance um, in our zoning code, which will complement and, and help carry out the, um, goals and objectives and strategies in the growth policy. Just through zoning, through the regulatory part of it. Um, so a current, uh, to encourage efficient use of land and public services, it's kind of the big picture intent. Um, objectives for that, you know, preserve natural and intercultural resources on a property. Provide open space and recreational areas beyond the minimum subdivision requirements. Um, right now, that is eleven percent of a prop, of a subdivision property. Um, you know, one of the incentives for this is to get more of that. And our developments promote a more efficient use of land than the base zoning district would allow. That's the zoning district, the existing zoning district of where a proposed PUD is going. So we're gonna call it the base zoning. Um, it results in clustered development, a smaller network of utilities and streets. Um, also, another objective, reduce vehicular trip generation, um, by providing mixed-use development. Um, that will, you know, for, for a PUD development to have, you know, mix of uses, then people may not need to travel outside of where they live to get to some of those services. So that's the aim there. And then also enhancing, you know, the, the non-vehicular activity, so making sure there's adequate bike and pedestrian connectivity, even to the point of, of, you know, for, for larger, maybe, maybe working with wind rider to have transit that can kind of come through. So always to reduce vehicular trips. Um, promote affordable, uh, or workforce housing. Um, and then also just support the adopted city of Livingston growth policy. Um, the minimum size, after discussing this and looking at others that, that we're proposing for this is one acre. Um, there's a lot that goes into this. There's a lot that goes into these reviews. They have to go through staff, then they have to go, um, to zoning commission for part of the review criteria, then planning board for the other. Um, and so, um, th- this is similar to what we saw in other places. Um, you know, and I think that's also gonna be the minimum to probably make all this work, since there is that, you know, must include some neighborhood scale commercial use. Um, and that's up to the developer to bring to us how much of that they want to include. Um, but I, I think that to, to have that mix of uses an acre is probably a good starting point. Um, so developer incentives and public benefits. Uh, I mean, that's kind of the beauty of this is we can, the, the city can, can guide how they want to see a new development by, by kind of, you know, saying here, well, if you give us this, these are the things we're trying to get out of this. Affordable housing, you know, more, um, reducing the vehicular trips, more park space. Um, you give us that more than the minimum you would have to get, then we're gonna give you these bonuses. We're gonna give you these incentives. Um, and the way that I have set this up is, um, these are the big things that, that we think are, are, and that we've seen in other PUDs that, that developers are gonna want to need to sort of make this work, um, mix the uses. The intent of the way I set this up, um, and again, I've got in red that, that we may need to fine tune how this language works for this, but is almost like a mix and match. So you've got three different types of bonuses, right? You've got the ten percent increase in allowed residential density is one bonus. You've got the height increase in R2 up to forty feet max. Um, and then a twenty-five percent impact fee reduction for one-fifth of all the residential units in the PUD. And I've already gone back and looked at this and recommending that we add language that explains, um, the height and the impact fee, you can only get once. So if I want, if I'm a developer and I want a ten percent increase in allowed residential density, I can pick from those three public benefits on the right to get that. I can say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna demonstrate that I can reduce vehicular trips from the PUD. So basically, I can show that I'm, I'm adding, and this is up to the developer to show us how they do this. We're gonna make some recommendations on that application form. But they can do trip generation, they can demonstrate that they're putting in, you know, a, a bike network, or again, they're gonna have transit stops. Whatever it is, if, if they think that's the way, and again, live work units, that is something that, that's a mix of uses. So if you're living and you're working in the same place, you're not driving to work, for the most part. Um, so, um, they could choose to have that, or they could say, we have a lot of open space. We're gonna put in a lot of open space. They can pull any of those public benefits on the right and provide those and choose what they want on the left. So, um, for example, if I want the height increase, and again, we're only looking at R2, we, we have a pretty high height allowance in other districts, and I'm gonna show you some comparisons in a minute between the zoning districts. So really, that is the only place where you think that makes even any sense. I think it's already at fifty feet in R3. So, you know, with the discussions, concerns about view shed, we get that, that seems good, um, for areas that are not concentrated in the downtown. Um, a developer could, could come in and say they want, you know, the, the bonus for, and they want to build at forty feet, right? Um, they can choose, again, any of those three benefits to give us, but they can only get that one once. So, they can give, um, and, and same thing with the impact fees. It's gonna be a max of forty feet, so they can only get that benefit once, and they have to give the total. They can't say, well, we're gonna reduce vehicular trips by five percent. That's not it. It's you have to show by ten percent. You have to do twenty percent of open space um, in order to get that, one of those, to get the forty feet, or to get the impact fee reduction. The only one that you can double up on, so to say, is the allowed density. But we're capping that at, we're recommending capping that at twenty-five percent over the base zoning district. So if a developer really wants to get to that twenty-five percent over base zoning district, increase the density, he could give us all three of these benefits. He could give us ten percent de-restricted affordable housing, ten, he or she, sorry. Um, ten percent reduction in vehicular trips demonstrated, and increasing the open space to twenty percent. But they can't get thirty percent increase in density. We are recommending capping it at twenty-five percent. Um, for phased planned unit developments, at least five percent of the total affordable workforce housing. Um, if that's one of the benefits they're giving us, has to be included in the first phase. We don't want people building the commercial aspect of it and then running out of money or whatever and saying, well, we're not giving you any of the affordable housing. Um. So that will be in the application form. We tried to clean a lot of this up. That is set actually by HUD at the federal level, and it's applied to localities based on the economic factors. Um, so some places have very complex formulas, I think Bozeman's does, where it's like, if you have, you know, housing for below twenty percent of the area median income, then you get this bonus of density, our density bonus. And if you have it below eighty percent, you get less of a density increase. We just don't, it, it seemed too complex. So my guess is, I, I wanna say the, um, is it eighty percent? Is typically the standard for affordable? Eighty percent of the area in median income that's identified at the federal level for this locality or for this area, that would be considered affordable. And that will be defined in the application form. It changes every year. But it will, it will reference that federal level, and that's, that's pretty standard across the board for any, any, when you talk about affordable. Um, or war and workforce is just more the same. It's providing for maybe a, a company needs a bunch of it, so it's kind of an interchangeable form, but it still needs to be affordable. One of the things I just kind of want to draw your attention to, um, or a couple of things. Um, so, um, we saw this when we went, um, some staff went over, um, and some of the commissioners went over to Bozeman to view um, a PUD project there that is in construction. They're about to start the third phase, bridge review. Um, and, uh, something that they, they did, which I thought was really appropriate, is they made it clear that the affordable or workforce housing units have to be substantially similar to the market rate. So it's not like you want to stick everybody back behind the truck stop that gets the market rate because they're paying less. And then all the, the prime spots, th- this, this has to be equitable. So it's, they have to be substantially similar in design, location. I think the way bridge review did it is they, they identified which of the units were gonna be market rate and workforce, but they're spread out in all different areas. The, the interior designs, the same as the finishing, um, because it needs to be equitable. And, and the way that theirs works and the way this works, if you do the affordable housing, part of this is, is the market rate ends up paying for and subsidizing, you know, the affordable units. Um, we're proposing, especially when you, if you have a smaller PUD, that, for that ten percent, you have to have a minimum of two affordable workforce units. I mean, if you're coming to us and you're getting an increase in density, uh, and you're only gonna put in like, um, and it's ten percent of them, but if you're only putting in five residential units, you know, let's say it's on a one acre lot, five residential units, and you're gonna have more of the commercial component, it seems, I mean, you're not gonna, it's not gonna work. So two, two, a minimum of two units, and then after that, it's gonna be the ten percent. Um, if that makes sense. Um. Also, uh, the, the dedicated open space, um, what that means is no more than half. The, our, our code defines different types of parkland. Um, it can be open areas of, of natural resources that you want to conserve, like wetlands, where people really aren't gonna develop, shouldn't develop and, and likely can't anyway. Um, or, or if it's a natural quarter or wildlife quarter, whatever it is, that's kind of that passive parkland. Then there's parkland that's defined in our code as, and that's the, the section twenty-eight, six, A sixteen B. That's what that is. That's that kind of passive parkland space. But we want to make sure that with this parkland dedication, they're also required to provide active space. So it can be courtyards, it can be common gathering areas, um, that are, you know, uh, more naturally landscaped. It can be a, a pocket park or a neighborhood park. It can be trails, a trail system. That, um, is defined as a different type. We want to require that at least half of that twenty percent of parkland is active. Or, yeah, so no more than fifty percent can be that sort of passive. Um, because it needs to be usable open space, too. And, um, uh, so that's one thing to draw your attention to, um. Yeah, and then again, the, the, the mix and match, you can mix and match. You could get, you know, all three, give all three of these benefits and, and do the residential as your bonus each time the residential density increase, maxing at twenty-five, but you can't double up and say, okay, I'm gonna do this twice, so I'm gonna get eighty feet max. You can only get the forty feet. And you get it once. The twenty-five percent impact fee reduction up to one-fifth of all residential units, you can't get that twice and get it on two fifths of all the residential units or fifty percent impact fee reduction on one-fifth, that makes sense. And I think that, that the language on this, I will probably tighten it more, but here's the general intent. Um, this is a table that I think will be helpful, I hope, and kind of showing you the difference in what is now, um, where we are with our zoning requirements. In the current code, the way that it is adopted. Um, and then in the red, this is where those, the increases come in. Um, for the height, we're only talking about R2. We're not offering anywhere else. Again, nobody's in mixed use. It's, it's not necessary. You're seeing sixty feet tall. Um, R3, it's fifty feet tall. This one would be forty max, and it's not forty max or higher if the roof pitch is three to twelve or steeper. This is forty max. So at, at forty, you're not doing a steeper roof pitch. That is the maximum. I think that is consistent with what we've heard. People are, you know, do and are okay with seeing and not wanting to see. Um, and that seems appropriate for those areas. Um. The increase in zoning. So our code, the way, as you know, it identifies, uh, densities for residential is the minimum lot size. I sometimes have a hard time putting my head around that, so I wanted to also show you in units per acre. Um, so for R1, right now, currently, you're allowed six point two units per acre at that seven thousand square foot minimum lot size. Um, with a twenty-five percent increase, and that's the max they can get, right? Um, that relates to seven point eight units. Yes, you're gonna round up, so it's eight. Instead of six, you get eight per acre for that. Um, for R2, again, right now, it's twelve point four units per acre. With the roundup, the max twenty-five percent increase, you're looking at fifteen and a half, so sixteen units per acre. Um, dwelling units. Uh, then go, go across the board. The high density, um, the, the R3, thirty-seven point nine, so thirty-eight to forty-seven per acre. Man, this is on an acre tract. They have two acres, and again, this is gonna kind of compare, because if they are providing that park space and they have a cap on their height, they may not be able to meet these, these, these densities. So that's where the balance is gonna come in, if that makes sense.
You've said that.
Sure. Setbacks, and I'll talk about setbacks, um, relaxing, that, this, that would be part of what they're proposing. We're not looking at it as an incentive. If they're proposing that as all of it and saying, we want to have this kind of setback, because we're requiring that buffer area between the uses, I don't think that's gonna play into it as much, because they already can't be right next to the surrounding neighborhood, right? Like, they have to put those transition zones and buffers between uses of different intensity. So I don't really see the, certainly not property setbacks around the perimeter coming into play. And if it's in the interior, I mean, the, the point of the setbacks, I mean, some is the building code, but some is also to kind of maintain that you're gonna have that anyway. People know in PUD, if they're, if they're going for a mix of uses typically means it's a more dense, uh, clustered development, and so you're not expecting those ten, fifteen-foot setbacks, I think. Um, mobile homes, I don't even know if this would come up. We have very few areas in the RMO districts, but again, from seven point three to nine, and then mixed use, and this looks scary. But again, I'm not so sure in mixed use. I don't know what the incentives are to go through the whole PUD when you can already get so much of what you want. It's very dense development. Um, you have a sixty-foot height limit. You're not getting any higher there, right? Um, so I think we're really probably talking about R2 and R3 um, and what we're guessing might come in. But that number is from, from fifty to sixty-two units per acre. Um. And then the forty-foot max, again, that's only for the R2 district. Um, so the setbacks, like I said, all the other things, the, the relaxation of, of design standards, what we saw in Bozeman and Bridge Review was, um, to make it work in that clustered development, they asked for relaxation, and I'm actually, I, I have a list, I'll show you after this, of how they identified all of the variances from either the zoning or the design standards. They put it all sort of in a table format, so you could easily see what they were asking for and why. Um, I know for the street widths, they, you know, there, there isn't space required between the sidewalks and then four-foot sidewalks, instead of, I think their minimum is five. By putting the sidewalks immediately adjacent to the street and not putting in a curb, if you have emergency vehicles in there and like, say, a fire engine, they can work around that extra area carefully. It's a, it's a small enough development. They're not going in there at sixty miles an hour, right? They're coming in, they're looking around. They can maybe use that sidewalk to kind of get around that turn, so they don't need such a wide turning radius, so they don't need such a wide street. And of course, that's all looked at during the design review by fire district, emergency responder services, but, um, those things can be done um, as part of the overall review of the PUD. They don't need to be a separate process unless they are going through a subdivision. If it's a subdivision, they can do it concurrently, but they have to request a variance, similar to how subdivisions go through now with the planning board. They will request a, like, a variance of, from some aspect of the design standards. Um, and then it, they will go on at the same hearing for planning board and talk about, okay, we're gonna have, um, now we've approved this for, uh, variance from our design standards, we're gonna go through and review the rest of it. So it can all be done at the same process. It saves them from having to do that in a separate hearing, on a separate timeline. Um, but some of these can be rolled over. The, the zoning changes, the changes to the, the use, the height, those kind of things do have to be done as part of the the zoning part of the review, sorry. And then the design standards are more what planning board will look at. Um. So just, there's, there's quite a few things that I wanted to highlight about in, in the ordinance. Um, actually, there's only three. Um. We tried to really simplify this, and, and I know we had discussed in, in a previous meeting, I can't remember if it was yours or this one, or, um, planning boards, but, um, view sheds were mentioned, how, you know, impacts on view sheds, wildlife quarters, having a survey done showing where the, the, if there's a wildlife quarter in there and how you're gonna mitigate. We started looking and thinking, and we can put all of that detailed information, I think, in the PUD application form. So rather than kind of really get into the weeds in the ordinance, we hit kind of the key highlights. So, and I think a couple of these make it clear, like, the second one, um, completed application form, but you're gonna see the application for the detailed submittal. And that's gonna get into, how do you show us? Like, for, to, to demonstrate that you're gonna reduce vehicular trips. Here's ways you might do that. You know, uh, you're gonna need to do a, um, a trip generation analysis or a traffic study for more than this many trips. Um, things that we can identify in the application form. And the benefit of that is if we, if we decide, hey, we're not getting people at the first time submitting all the information we want to see, we can go back and tweak that application form a little bit without having to come through a whole process. So that's where the details of that are gonna be about what they need to submit. Um. The, we had talked about before having some sort of a, like a work session before, um, after they submitted an application, but before it went to hearings. Um, after talking with city manager Gager right before this meeting, I am going to suggest um, something we had in the ordinance that I wasn't sure how we could do, that now I think we want to add back in, and that is that work session after the application comes in before it goes to zoning or planning. I think there is a way that we can do that where it's not gonna get into any problems with, um, having quorums at meetings, that kind of thing. Um, but it wouldn't be a public hearing. It would just be kind of a listening session for planning board and zoning commission members, um, and possibly city commission? Is that where two of the way it did with Shane?
Um, so generally, and not to jump in here, but it would be a community meeting, um, and not specifically for the board members, but it would be for the community. Board members would be able to attend. We would just provide the direction that it's not an opportunity for deliberation of the board members. It's, it's to receive that information. It's going out to the public anyway and observe that, because your kind of question and deliberation time will come in, in a meeting like this, if that makes sense.
Which, does that mean it's the same as this?
That would be in addition to this. The top one?
Yeah.
That's what we were putting in. I'd actually, I think I would recommend to keep them both in there. So the way that it's drafted right now is before, after the pre-application conference, which they're required to have with city staff. Um, and that is gonna be typically, it's gonna be planning, building, uh, fire and rescue, and police, uh, public works. But it could be others. So rather than trying to specifically identify who needs to be there, that really is gonna be more relevant to the, the, the application that comes in, the, the scope of it. Um, I mean, it, it may be where we need somebody else to come in and, and, and participate with that. Um, you know, so the exact attendees, who from the city staff is gonna attend, we're gonna kind of leave that, but we're just saying they need to come to the pre-application conference then. Between that and submitting their application, they need to, the way it's drafted now, and I, I support this, I mean, I would recommend keeping it, um, but is the applicant has to notify landowners within three hundred feet of the PUD outer boundaries. Um, and they have to provide a way in which the public and these landowners will be specifically notified, but it would be a way for them to get public input. We could put this, if it's a website, let's say, where people can fill out a survey and submit comments, we can advertise for that and put it in like a city newsletter or somewhere that people can provide comments before they finalize their application. Um, and the reason I like this is there may be something that just nobody thought of or that anybody was aware might be a problem. And so it's sort of to get the information out, hey, we're, we're coming into the city pretty soon with the PUD application. Here's in general what we want to do. What do you have to say about it? So that's kind of more, and, and we are going to require that they provide that information, any comments they received with their application material. The other meeting that we discussed that's not in the proposed ordinance right now, but now that I realize it can happen, I would, I would recommend we put back in is after they submit their application. Staff has reviewed it. Staff has reviewed it for sufficiency, completeness. We're moving it forward. A month before they go to the first board, and again, for subdivisions, we're gonna need to figure out the timing of this, because there's some required timelines to meet from the state that trickle down here. Um, but before they go, and I think we can make it work, like, two weeks before, to either zoning or planning board, zoning commission or planning board. Um, and that could definitely be in the same month, because zoning meets the second Tuesday, planning board. Zoning Commission or Planning Board, um, and that could definitely be in the same month because zoning meets the second Tuesday, planning board typically meets the third Wednesday. Um, they have to have that public work session where it's a community meeting. It's a listening meeting. Now, members of the community can ask questions and speak with the developers, but it would be, we would need to instruct. Um, advisory boards or or city commission members that want to attend. It's only for mis informational purposes. That that's not a question and answer for them. But again, it's it's one more time that, you know, now that we've come in, we've gotten all the application materials. Maybe they made some tweaks based on the first round of comments before it actually goes through to committees to have that public hearing. There's another one more chance for that back and forth Q and A, public input. And and we heard from both uh zoning commission and planning board that that was really important. I think it was even a couple of members of the public at a planning board meeting. That this was reviewed, um, said that was really something they wanted to see where where the public had. Input um and and got information earlier on in a process than when it first came to an advisory board and had the public hearing. So my recommendation would be to insert that into the application process in the ordinance. That we have that public work session that's a listening session and the intent is that. And I will tweak the 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 exact language that we need. Um, and it will be looked at by city attorney and then that's where it'll go to city commission. So that would be my recommendation was to add that in.
You can't get to the next phase until that happens.
Well, you yeah, it's a it's a required part of the, I I shouldn't even say application process. It's a part of the review process. So before, yeah, after you, after we've said you have a complete application and we're going to move forward, we're going to send it out to the departments. And if there's, you know, Park County people, the staff that need to or departments that need to weigh in. Um, send it out to them, but we're moving the application for, we're going to schedule that zoning commission, public hearing. But in advance of that, you need to be ready to have that you the the community meeting, the work session. Where people can wait in and it would come before the first public hearing.
Is there, would their application be completely public and transparent at that point? Or is it up to the applicant what they share during the public meeting?
Once an applicant submits their application to us and we have determined it to be complete, that is public. Property. Anybody can call and say, can I see the application? Um, for these types of things, um, we don't do it now, uh, but I I would. Want to figure out a way that we could have a page that we could post that application online, so people could view it. Again, once we have started the process of review. People could review it and submit comments either in advance of the work session or prior to the public hearing. Prior to the city commission meeting, um, that's typically in other places of work, the way that you get that public input. Um, but yes, all the application, once it's a complete application and the process is moving forward into review. That information in the application is all publicly available for any application we have. Even right now. And then just sort of a catchall at the bottom of that application list of 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 things in the application. And again, this is where I I what I've seen in other ordinances and 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 why we wanted to kind of distill it down from getting in the weeds. We may not know of all the way, I may not, you know, be able to think of all the ways right now, or I may not have thought of something that a developer would use to make their case. And demonstrate why they can do something or how they're giving us a public benefit. So I want to put it on them. I mean, yes, there's going to be some things we we mentioned in the application form, but by and large, you need to give us everything you can to to show us. To demonstrate that your development proposal and and impacts and any mitigation. How it's going to meet the criteria, the review criteria. So if we get, you know, into the the. Public listening meeting, the work session, and people are saying, well, it's not really clear how you're going to do this. Like you're not really showing us how all these trails connect to the outside or whatever. Um, then it stops and at that point, we need more information to complete the application. So that's kind of and and it could get to city commission. They say, hey, we need more. Now hopefully, we would be able to identify that earlier on, and I think that's a good reason why. I like the idea of having that initial kind of outreach to the public and then also that work session so that. You know, they don't want to get through, you know, the developer, I'm guessing, doesn't want to go through zoning commission and planning board and then realize. Oh, actually, we need to provide more information, so now we have to go back. They're going to want to know ahead of time if they haven't made things clear and demonstrated they'll meet the review criteria. So these are the review criteria. The one in red I noticed was a pretty important one. It's it's actually should be on both zoning commission and planning boards. Um, so I added that in and that is for both. For the zoning commission review. You know, your purview is the zoning code, right? Yeah, that's that's what you're looking at this, the lens of um through through zoning, through our chapter thirty. So the review criteria for this commission is, you know, that the the proposed P U D is going to support. Our adopted growth policy with respect to applicable densities and 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 new schools. Objectives or strategies, so. For example, um, you know, the growth policy. Supports infill development. Um, it supports, you know, cluster development, increased density. So if they're proposing to get that increased density, but they're also providing a part, you know, park space. Which is also in the growth policy to, you know, increase available park space. That's just two ways that they're showing they are this this development supporting the growth policy. Proposed deviations from the underlying zoning requirements will not adversely affect the public and or the surrounding neighborhood. Now, it's it's really going to be up to them to show how it doesn't. And again, I'll show you in a minute from Bridge Review, that kind of list of relaxations. And why it's necessary and benefits. And then also the uses with varying intensities are effectively buffered like we talked about, um, both within the P U D and between the P U D and the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and so again, something like that. They, and this may be here, there's there's mitigation that's proposed, like we are going to. Um, buffer those uses. This is how we're going to do it. We're going to put in some landscaping over here. We're going to have the stormwater swale. That's also going to be part of this park space, but it's going to be between the, you know, R one neighborhood and and our P U D or something like that. So um, you're going to be looking at those three main things and saying, does this P U D. Meet these review criteria with any mitigation strategies they have. Does it conditions of approval? Does it meet that? Those three criteria. For planning board, again, you, the zoning commission will not be looking at this um as part of that planning board. Review, but just to, so it's on your radar. Again, the same thing with the the growth policy, but they're more kind of the larger goal of strategies objectives. They're not, the planning board review doesn't consider the uses. The departures from uh our public works design standards and or subdivision regulations, if it requires a subdivision review. Um, will not adversely affect the public and the surrounding. So if they are proposing to. Change the sidewalk widths, how is this not going to impact? The surrounding, are they going to mitigate it somehow? Are they going to have some sort of landscaping? Or um, it are the. I don't want to really say the the speed limits in there because I don't, I mean, those are set. Parking, maybe they put parking in a certain place where it won't. Conflict with the way the streets are laid out. It won't, uh, I think at Bridge Review, none of the parking was in front. It was all on the side or in the rear. That just kind of protects that street scape a little more, makes it a little safer since you have the narrower, the narrower sidewalks. And you don't have the curbs on the streets, you know, if kids are playing, people aren't always pulling in and out of their driveways back and out. That's kind of how they looked at it. Some of this can be more qualitative, I think, than than strictly by like how they mitigate. But it's just something that that planning board will look at, and that's the same thing they would look at if it's a subdivision. Now that goes through, um, and then that variance process now is done concurrently. Uh, the P U D established effective connections. Uh, within itself, so a bike network, bike ped, um, but also to the surroundings. So if you have a. Multi-use path in the P U D and it goes to the edge of the P U D, I mean, is it just ending? Is it a dead end or does it connect to some other trail that's already there? Do you lay out the P U D so that if there is a connecting trail, you're making sure to make that connection? Size and type of parkland and open space and demonstrate its adequacy for the land use densities and dwelling types as well as. They need to show us how, who's going to be responsible for the maintenance and conservation of these areas. And also that, and this is a big one, but this is straight from kind of the way that the subdivisions are reviewed. So this is really just a catchall if it doesn't require the subdivision review process. Technically, um, say somebody's got an acre P U D and they're not selling off any of it, they're just going to rent space for commercial uses and all that. They're going to maintain it and not subdivide it. They still are going to need to hit the same. Criteria that a subdivision would, um, it can't adversely impact natural environment, critical wildlife habitat, agriculture, public health, safety and local services. Again, that's all they're going to need to show us how that that works. Like if if there's an identified wildlife quarter. You're going to need to show us that your proposal, your your development isn't going to impact that. It's not going to change things. Impact it adversely. Um, so those are just the main criteria. I did want to show you, I pulled this. I just does not like this. So it stopped again. Okay. I've not had this problem before. So. It's just stopped unexpectedly. So is the whole Zoom meeting just shut? Yep. Let's, I don't see. I'm not seeing the. Uh, Wendy, can you still hear or see what's going on here? Okay, good, because I just got a notice Zoom shut down again.
Been continuous.
Okay, um, I shut the PowerPoint, so hopefully I can get back in here. Nope. I saved the PowerPoint. Unfortunately, I didn't save the. Okay, um, so basically, we can't see it and I apologize. Um, what Bozeman Bridge Review did is is for their deviations and that's a main component of your application. You need to state where you're requesting a deviation from the base zoning requirement. So if I'm requesting. Um, to have increased density, I need to say what the base zoning density is. Remember that underlying zoning district. I need to show what I'm asking for. Um, and and. I can't even pull it. Oh, I need to have it here, sorry. Yeah, there's. Several things we have on here, um. Listing of each deviation or class of deviation from zoning, a list of deviation or class of deviation from the subdivision regulations, if it's a subdivision. Uh, and or the city's public works design standards and specs. Um, and again, they need to justify why they want this deviation. We want to um increase zoning, um, or I'm sorry, increase uh density. So that um, that's required in order for us to be able to provide twenty percent of parkland space, right? We can't develop over there or we're we're protecting these natural resources and we want cluster. So this is why we need whatever over here. We need skinnier sidewalks or. You know, not curb and and gutter streets or or whatever it is. The narrative is going to have to be, I mean, that's that's a big lift for the developer. They're going to have to not only, you know, the supporting information we talked about. Like maybe it's a view shed analysis if 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 we know that there's a pretty open view shed here. You know, or it's. Whatever, a a wildlife survey, anything that they provide, but the project narrative also really needs to go into in what we're doing. Um, we're, this is why we want to do this. This is why we want to have these mix of uses. Our our vision is that we want to um be able to provide a small format grocery store. Um, in an area to reduce vehicular trips across to the south side of the tracks, whatever it is. And that's kind of why I I think I like the way this is morphed, at least in in as far as what I'm recommending. Is is give it to the developer. Tell the developer they need to demonstrate all this to us and we can give them some guidelines. But that's also going to be dependent on the the what they're doing and the site. You know, some sites are going to be really steep, so this is why we can't do it here. This is how we'll demonstrate why or or say why we're doing what our purpose is. Some sites are going to be flat so that the topography isn't going to be an issue. Ever, the reason they're doing everything, how they can meet. You know, the objectives right here, it has to meet these objectives. It can't just say, oh, well, all we're going to do is. Provide some open space and we're not going to hit any of this other stuff. Um, it it's, these are the main things that make sure that these P U Ds, the proposed developments are going to meet the intent of. The whole purpose of the ordinance. Um, and there was one other operation and maintenance plans. Again, existify, the the existing zoning, not just the requirements and where the divisions are. But they need to be able to show us what it's zone now and then what the surrounding immediately surrounding areas are zoned so that it's really clear to see. Is this a major conflict? You're proposing to put um a fairly intensive P U D right smack in the middle of an R one neighborhood. Just because you hit all the, but that may not be appropriate and that's. The interesting part of this is some of this is going to be. A qualitative analysis, but it still has to tie back to those objectives. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm really tired. I think. And the, oh, sorry, another key one is the multi-phase projects. We did have a comment that came in. Uh, from the planning board chair, Stacy Jovick. Um, it's in that packet I gave you about timelines on P U D phasing. Now, if it goes to a subdivision process that's tied to the subdivision statutes, but if it doesn't. Um, that is a good point. Do we want to say, you know, you need to move forward with with reporting the. The P U D plan and development agreement with the city within one year or two years of after it's approved by the city commission. That isn't something that we included for non-subdivision projects, but if we get one. Um, it it and you think it's a good idea to recommend that, then we may want to put that in there. I want to say it's five years. I would, for this, because there's so much going on and because I think public awareness of these is is so important and there are these mix of uses. I would, for me, I think I would recommend a shorter timeline, but that said. You know, if you have one person that's putting all this together, the applicant, and then they need to kind of like say, okay, well, I'm gonna. You know, I've gone through the subdivision or or sorry, not subdividing, but I need to find investors, other investors or. Who is going to fill this mixed use space because they're not going to come, it's not going to be like, hey, we're going to have. An Applebee's in this location. They're probably not going to know that detail. More like it's going to be some sort of like restaurant or commercial retail, that kind of thing. So they may not have all that identified, so they do need some time to get that together. I'm not a developer. But I would guess two years is 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 enough time to do that. Um, and again, this is, there is a process to, you know, request. Um, an extension on that. And I think that that for any land use review we have, I'd have to check for site point review too, that they're all. It's identified in the code, so I don't know, that might need to be added too, but um. Mending and approved. Bannament or expiration. Okay, this is the last part of the proposed ordinance. It do not involve a request of division. Notice of non-compliance with the completion schedule shall be delivered in writing, blah, 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 so. The commission may grant one or more extensions, but each is a matter of grace, which may be subject to additional conditions. So it can be done. They need to come in and ask for it. Um, you know, but I would give them a decent amount of time where you're not going to be having to process this and, you know, I don't think. I think there's some give and take there. But again, we haven't identified that timeline for non-subdivision projects. So if that was something that you wanted to see in the ordinance, I would recommend that you consider language and and what you want to see for that to add. Again, zoning commission is going to be looking at certain criteria, planning board is going to be looking at certain criteria into their review. Um, then same as anything else, you make the recommendation to uh city commission. Um, planning board makes the recommendation to city commission and then city commission takes it up. Um. Try to follow similar guy uh process for, I didn't want to create new process for a lot of this if we already had something on the books or that we were doing anyway, so how they file the final PUD again, if it's a subdivision, it's a little bit of a different process, um, and it may be that all these come through and they need some sort of a subdivision. I don't, I I mean, the larger tracts of land, that would be my guess, is they would want to do that. But I don't know because I haven't seen any come in yet. Um, and we don't have a ton of large raw tracts of land, so. Um, but yeah, it just, it goes through a process, they have to come to us, they need to file, again, either the the preliminary plat needs to come in. Um. And uh the development agreement, we would have that looked at with, um, they prepare it, I think that's how I've put it in here. Um. Other ordinances I looked at said we should prepare it, I'm not a fan of that, so we're going to have them prepare it and we would review it legally and make sure that it aligns with any conditions of approval um that were placed on the approval of the PUD, um, and then all that goes into um being recorded. I'm the zoning administrator and that's I, that's, that is something that um. Chair Jovick had asked about, um, that is language that's elsewhere in the code. Um, so it is the zoning administrator is is the planning director, it's the same thing. Um. Uh, but it's just for this one. Now that you're saying that. Because it, the, it, all the UDs are going, the the rezoning, that's why the administrator can, the zoning administrator is the one assigned to it, that role, and it doesn't say planning director because it's a zoning change, it's a rezoning. Um. One other thing I wanted to or phased development that was in here that I wanted to make sure you guys saw. Um. If I can't control F it because I can't bring it up. I can't find it. I think, um, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to show you kind of that that layout in a table format of the the deviations from either subdivision design standards or from the public works design standards, um, why they're asking for it, like what's the justification? Um, it's kind of all on that list, so it's really, and that's, that's got to be part of any PUD application. Um. So I think that's all I wanted to show you, I'm really sorry about the technology glitches. I'm sure you have questions and if you do, happy to try to answer them.
I, I have a, well, the first question is, um, what happens if um a project does enter abandonment? I do that in one of our two. Abandonment, so these units are a city commission for which there is a landowner development, they have to be of compliance with the completion schedule.
Yes, so if they are, that there's going to be a timeline that's included, whether it's phased or not, and and if they um lose their financing, whatever, they can't come up to it, there's, there's, it's looked at by the city commission of, is this abandoned? Um, now that you're saying that, I had this in earlier, yeah, it's in here, okay. So for the portion of PUD which is not developed under the approved terms, the provisions of the PUD lapse and the site shall revert back to the base zoning district in place prior to approval. So that's really important, um, it's, and it may be that they, you know, if it's if it's four phases and they develop the first three and they just whatever, lost their investors, the market changed, they can't do the fourth one. Um, and that's why we, we, you know, certain infrastructure similar to, I think, how subdivisions are done is is made so that each is, and actually there's language in here about it's a standalone phase where it's not, you can't have all the housing in phase four. Um, you have to have some of it upfront, you have to provide for each development, you have to, like for subdivisions, they require, you know, when you're starting to develop phase two, then the stormwater, um. Uh, the way it's routed is made for phase two, but phase one is already taken care of. Um, so they they need to be able to stand alone and then when you add the next one and it is developed, they need to work together. But it's not dependent on what's in phase four, let's say of a four-phase development. And so the rest of it stays as it is, still under the conditions because they have to meet the conditions of each phase as they're developed and then phase four would resort back to the base zoning. Um, so is that, did that answer?
A little bit, I feel like I would just need to think through what that means, I guess I'm just concerned someone would, would lag on their public benefits. Is it what I'm wondering is like.
There's, yeah. Um.
Consequences.
And this is all, we're trying to sort of piggyback on how it's done for subdivisions, I know there is language of that and we we can't. The subdivision code is vast.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, so I think we reference it in a lot of places, so let's see, some of the ones I referenced.
Is that something?
filing of the PUD.
The lawyer, if she looks through, would also.
Cherry.
Review.
Um, yes, all of this is going to be, um, and I realize I talked to you about this, but I don't know if I mentioned this. Um, we do not have a city, a full-time city attorney on staff right now, so we are bringing this to you. Um, the intent is here, um, you know, again, the formatting is going to be done, that's not going to change the intent of anything. Um, but whatever additional changes, revisions you recommend tonight, um, changes, whatever that is, all of this then is going to be looked at by the city attorney. Um, and then made sure that there's nothing conflicts, any of that. Um, and then it's going to go to the city commission. Um, rather than doing it before and then having to send it back again if you make changes. Um, but what you were asking about, I know it's in here.
Are we talking about the asterisks on page one?
We're talking about all of it. That's not the only, I think that's part of it, that's just for the affordable, to make sure it's in there. But there's other language in here that talks about, I think it refers to the subdivision process that needs to be. Um. They have to develop it in a certain way that, that again, that makes it standalone. So they don't put in all the infrastructure requirements for phase four and they do phase one. But yes, the public benefits thing, that is something that's. I think it can, but for each phase, if you're going to put in, if you're going to do your housing, all of your housing in phase one, then whatever benefit or public benefit that you wanted to provide to get that has to also be done in phase one. And so now that you're saying that, I don't know, I thought that was in here, but I will double check and make sure it gets in there. Yeah.
And I would also, to the extent that that public benefit is not constructed in phase one, which we would require, but to the extent that that was not possible for whatever reason.
Yeah.
We do have, excuse me, mechanisms, whether it's performance bonds or otherwise, to ensure that that work does get done, we can enter it with the applicant and the developer. So while that might not be here, that's a fantastic uh idea and something I I've worked with that elsewhere.
And I thought, I'm sorry, because I thought that we did put this in here. Um, I just, without being able to control F it, I can't remember where everything is, but I'm just going to write performance bonds, um. Or public benefits on future phases. Okay, but I also think, um, and maybe we need to make that clear, if you're going to, like I said, if you're going to get that um, 10% of of additional density because you're providing 20% of park space. Um, I think, uh, or you're providing the the 10% of affordable housing, I think you have to provide the same amount percentage-wise in that first phase, like you can't build all your non-affordable housing in the first phase. And it says a minimum of 5%, but I think, I think it needs to be.
To cover that aspect because all we say that the affordable housing has to be, you know, similar to the other housing in.
That is true. In locations, I think that'll, yeah, okay. Is it? Well, that's for the 5%. Similar, yeah. Okay, I think increase. Um. Yeah. But I think that's probably good to make sure that it's covered in here about, just making sure that we're not going to get all the incentives done and then we don't get the benefits that allow those incentives. But.
Not everyone is.
Pardon? Yeah. Uh. Really? You don't trust all developers? And I mean, well.
I'm also just curious about, um. I don't know if either of you can speak to evaluating, you know, the developer is coming to the board and the commission and the public with their proof of benefit, and I'm just curious about as a person being able to evaluate the facts and the information that are given to me. Um, because some people can be very good salesmen. And I guess I'm just curious about that, if there's like an education process or how other communities maybe have gauged whether. I mean, how do you know?
Are you talking about these? So we're talking about the public benefits on this table? So that's going to be very clearly stated, I'm 10% of all our, we're asking to develop 200 housing units. If we want one of these incentives, then 20 of those, right, is my math right? I think it is. 20 of those need to be restricted affordable or workforce, so you need to show that in your plan. That's going to be part of the development agreement, that's going to be part of we have this, and that's also going to be looked at as far as the phasing, the thing we just talked about, so it's going to be, I mean, this is sort of like a formula, like it's, okay, you want this much, you get you give us this, you get this, the height increase. So if they want to get that height increase up to 40 in R2 based on the parkland, they need to give us the acreage of what they're proposing to have as parkland, and then let's say that's I don't know if it's a, if it's a, again, we don't have 200 acres, I'm just 10 acres, right? And so that would be two acres of that is parkland, a minimum of two acres gets you that that 40-foot max, if you wanted that increased height. You need to show us where that two acres is and one of those can't be, and that's, I mean, that's just, you showed it on the site plan, right? One of those can't be, um, had, they can't both be passive parkland. So if you add up all the trails and the greenways and and there's typically like a formula, like a couple feet on either side for maintenance or whatever, they can, somebody can put that into um into acreage and square feet, and so that formula will all be laid out, it is in subdivisions too, subdivisions, they're required a minimum of 11%, I think of parkland, dedicated parkland. So when you're looking at the site plan for that, you're looking at here's how many acres, here's how many acres this park is, if we're going to put in a playground over here, right? And we're going to have some play space, this is this many acres, that'll be identified on the site plan. Is that? Kind of.
Confirmed by the staff.
So if we have a site plan and it is stamped by a professional, that is how that's done. Um, you you can't have that layout, um, you know, and again, if you're going to have, for granted, we would say, for me, I would say if we're going to have a site plan and you're you're proposing to, yeah, show us acreage or your, um, you know, the vehicular trips is a little bit different because that's not going to necessarily be on the site plan, all of that information. Um. But yeah, an engineer, we may say an engineer or or, um, I think, I know in Colorado, I don't know if it's the same here, but I would guess it is, a landscape architect um, can also do these kind of plans um and and certify them, so that's your professional stamp. I'm not going to go in question, I'm not going to go take a tape measure and measure a PUD. But if they're stamping it and they're saying this is the area, this is what we're proposing, yes, before we're kind of closing out building permits on whatever the phases or the end, we're going to go look, and if you said, I say we, maybe it's me, I'm going to go look, and if you said you're going to have a park over here and I go to check out your PUD and there's no park over there, you're not, we're not, you're not open for business yet, like you're not getting your building permits closed out, so, um. You know, we have limited staff to do inspections during a build, but typically, you know, you have a set of plans, they're stamped, you give them to a builder or contractor and that's what they follow. We're supposed to, um, and I think, you know, for the most part, I I think they're not going to stray from what's on there, but then that is a that is something that, maybe that is a little bit of a different inspection mechanism than we do right now, I don't know how subdivisions are closed, who looks at what. If we're just looking at building or we're looking at parkland, all that, but it would probably follow the same thing, the same process.
Yeah, we look for inspection to make sure that they comply with all the conditions and requirements.
Okay. That cover it?
Thank you.
You guys are being super patient. Thanks.
I guess what I would say, uh. Yeah, I'm still out here. Uh, thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation, I thought it was really well done and uh, unlike some things, I could follow what you were presenting and it all made a lot of sense, so. Yeah, I just want to thank you for putting so much time into that and presenting it in a way that I think is easy to understand or easier than. So.
I'm I'm glad it was, I wasn't sure, so, um, a lot of this, as as you know, we we've kind of worked on this till the 11th hour, um, on Friday, so I'm glad that that it made sense, um.
What about, I'm just going to go to Stacy's comments about the parking requirements for how many commercial space?
So, um, we have parking requirements for uses set in our zoning code, right? So that's, I think it's a section, is it 3051J maybe, um, but that I, because it was in the last thing that went through, um, yeah, I know it, um. And that may be something that is a relaxation that they ask for. So if we want to deviate, let's say, I I mean, if I'm clustering everything together and we have mixed uses, um, I may not need the separate parking for everything, right? If we have, if we have a I don't know, this shows how southern. That's a deviation, yeah, so let's say, um. So, the south, sorry, let's say you have a dinner theater, because I can't think of anything else right now, that dinner operates at night, right? And then you have a church, right? They're not going to be parking at the same time, so that's when you have those shared parking requirements. Um, and that can be a relaxation from the minimum parking that's identified in table 3051J. But that's something they would list in the deviation because that is a zoning requirement, the parking, so that's something they list in there. Um. Trying to think of what else would come up maybe in zoning. Uh. It may also be, again, maybe they're wanting to put do we even, I I feel like we have brewery in our use table, let's just say we have brewer in our use table and they want to put a brewery um, someplace, like the base zoning doesn't allow it. But it makes sense based on what they're proposing as a mix of use in this PD, a mix of uses in this PUD. That is something they would say we're deviating from what uses are allowed in this PD, PUD, um. So that they are including, uh, same thing, and it's funny because I was talking to Jim about this today, um. Uh, Jim Woodall, for R1, commercial businesses are not allowed, but if you were to have a PUD that came through in an R1 district and they have to have a commercial component, some sort of commercial component, that is covered under the deviations and that's looked at by zoning, saying the use, they're proposing a use that is not allowed in the base zoning district, but because this is a holistic development, we're going to look at it with that, does that help? So things like parking, the uses, again setbacks, if we're going to have setbacks. Um, and we are because we're going to require that transition between uh different intensity uses. Um, that's going to all be looked at holistically, but they're going to have to say, here's what the base zoning allows. Here's what we're proposing, base zoning says we have to have a 10-foot setback um, from whatever, and we're proposing to have a five-foot setback. So it's clearly identified, like I said, in in like a table format of, this is what the base is, this is what we're proposing. this is what the base is, this is what we're proposing, the deviation to be, and this is the justification. So that it's not like we have to figure that out. That's, I, the less I have to figure out and then get somebody else to put it in front of me, the better. You know, now, we can also say that doesn't make any sense to us, and it doesn't, you haven't shown us how you meet these criteria. That's, that's ultimately up to your recommendation and the commission to decide. But demonstrating it is, is, this is heavily on the developer, and that's why it's, it's more intensive. I think it's gonna be more intensive than, than the subdivision process, but again, the benefit is we, we get something out of it. If we can get something that we really need, like affordable housing or more active park space, then, then it's kind of worth that that give and get. And somebody else just join.
So is this the point where we talk about whether we've asked all our questions?
I would ask if there's comment, again, we have, uh, two members of the public out here. And, and I would, I would put it out for public comments, yeah.
Is there any comment from the public that's on Zoom?
Go ahead, Stacy.
Um, I'm trying to do my video too. Oh, it says it can't detect my camera. I wonder why. So I guess you don't get to see me. I guess the, the thing that strikes me is that overall, this is the good plan, as you, I guess, have my comments, um, from earlier. And I think it might be helpful, I don't know, it strikes me as when you're talking about deviations. I guess you're saying that you don't know what those deviations might be. And so you're putting it on the developers to say in a chart form, I'm deviating from this, 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 and this. And so you're not going to give them the list of, you know, possible deviations. You're just saying they're going to provide to you the deviations. Whatever they need, whatever they may be.
Because each, each is going to be unique to that site and what their uses are. So it, it, they, you know, they, they're, that we have, you know, identified public works, design standards, we have, if it's the zoning code. So, you know, that's, that's heavy lifting on their part. You look through this and ask, you know what the requirements are. What are you asking to do different? Why are you asking us to do this? What's the justification? So, yeah, it's, it's putting that on them, but there's definitely, there's places where they can find this. It's not just sort of like trying to figure, I mean, it's zoning code, the standards, subdivision if necessary, yeah.
So my other comment would be just on, um, at the very end, when I was talking about, um, notice of non-compliance. Um, you, I'll talked about it a little bit, but, um, I didn't know whether you would actually touched on the number of extensions that were a possibility um, to be put in there if it was a non-subdivision review. In other words, it's number two on, on the last page. No, it is then thirty days after the notice of non-compliance. Um, and it says the commission may grant one or more extensions. So that's open-ended, one or more, which I don't know, it just seemed like you can get into a can of worms, so at least you could say up to two or three or whatever, pick a, pick a number. You don't want it to go on forever. Cause they're always going to come back with, well, I had this happen and I couldn't do it, or, or something. It just, to tighten it up. That was all, that was all I was wondering about.
Um, you, you're right, we don't have it in there. I guess my concern with that would be, or my comment on that is, um, you know, I, we don't know, because we haven't processed one of these yet, what may kind of, and, and, and the developers, at, at least if they've only been working in Livingston, they may not have done one of these yet either. So there might be some trial and error. I, I think, you know, I, I find it hard to believe. Or I guess I just questioned that, with, whether the city commission, is it is at their discretion, would continually, continually, continually grant extensions if there wasn't a really good reason. That said, I mean, I, again, if you have a multi-phase development, and, you know, you have developed the first three phases in accordance with the approved plan and phasing, and then phase four, you're just stuck, you're having problems, whatever happened, that, that maybe the, the economics have changed. Um, it, it may be, I mean, maybe you need, you know, more than a year extension than another year extension. And I don't know that we identified that. Do you happen to know if for the
It was on page, page two, I believe, under application procedures is where um, there's feature phases and H, I believe is where you were also addressing that issue.
The time limit on phasing. Um, I, I would not, I would not recommend putting a time limit on phasing because the first ma- phase may take longer than the second and third phase to develop. Again, so I, I don't know that I would do anything there. Well, let's see, so it says, um, when it involves a subdivision, they submit an overall phase development preliminary platform for, and that's, that's pursuant to how the subdivision code works. And I think we can look to that and maybe just make it clear in here that we would state the same timeline, I guess, for that. Oh, my gosh. Give me a sec, guys. But that is, you know, I, I, if you wanted to limit the number of them, I mean, that's, that's up to you. I guess I just, I don't, I don't know how realistic it is that people would come back and back again, and the commission would continue to approve that, but it, it's definitely you know, something to consider.
Sure. Well, that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Stacy. I appreciate it. I didn't lay back this morning, but um, and I have given a copy of that to all of the zoning mission. Um, oh, Wendy, I'm, I didn't realize, I'm sorry, I didn't send this to you. Email, cause I printed it, um, but I can send that along. The other comment we got was from Bisha Hamilton, but I think we actually, if, if the zoning commission goes with that recommendation, are gonna, she had asked about having that, that work session. Um, after the application has been accepted as complete and before it goes to the first public hearing. So if you make that recommendation, I think that covers what she had a question about. Uh, there is another, um, there isn't, well, there is another member of the public on, um. So do you wanna call for, last call for public comment?
Uh, last call for public comment.
It doesn't look like she's pulling off mute, so I think we're good there. So now it really is, I think you've asked your questions, maybe just discussion, clarity, whatever you wanna.
How are the members of the, um, mission feeling about putting forth a motion and where with adjustments to the ordinance from the staff?
Is that something that we'll get to look at in review as well, or is that more city admin work?
It's administrative, but I'm definitely happy to bring it before, um, you and the planning board. I think by, by leaving it separate, you know, you cover the main elements of what's needed, but then the specifics of how a developer does that. Again, it makes it a little more flexible for us to kind of tweak that without having to go through the full review process. But yes, absolutely, before we finalize that, I can bring it to zoning and planning, and I think that's a good idea to do that. Make sure I haven't missed anything. No, yeah, and, and again, there's quite possibly something I've missed or forgot to put in there. So I'm, I'm happy to have the other, what are we looking at, nine, five, fourteen sets of eyes? That works for me.
Timeframes. So what was it for development, like the two-year? Mark, it was like setting a limit on, it wasn't extended, it was just like how long it's the, yeah, for the paving.
And it'll be plan, shall incorporate all the conditions, applicant shall submit copies of the PUD and other documents as required. Traffic PUD agreements. I know it's covered in subdivision, I just wanna make sure. I don't think, it does not look like that is in here. For subdivisions, again, we can't change what that is. I guess then it makes sense for us to state it clearly on here for non-subdivision projects. And that's, I wish I could look, can you look on your phone? Uh, to see how, unless you know, is it three years or five years?
Thing that I might heard is the, the PUD process, you know, has a minimum of one acre, but it could conceivably be used on a hundred acre parcel out there. Um, and so, uh, in my brain, you know, and, 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 yes, the hundred acre parcel, you know, conceivably, or even a twenty acre parcel, could conceivably not be subdivided, it could be master developed by the entity. And so, you know, dealing with a, a timeframe, you know, for something that accommodates both the one acre and twenty acre might be a little bit difficult.
Check in points on process of building, even if that is the case. Like, I think that's what we're concerned about, it's just like continue, make sure they're continuing on with the work. Like, what does that look like?
And it's, so for the, for a phase development, they have to tell us their timeline. And so that is one thing, it's not a regulatory thing, it's, it's, and again, they may say, you know, phase one is gonna take longer, so we need three years on phase one, but then phase two, we're only adding on like twenty residential units and whatever, um, so we only need, you know, another year for that. Um, so I, I, as far as for each phasing, how long it takes, I, I wouldn't, I don't think I'm too concerned about that, but I think what you're asking about is, is to get started. On the front end, and that's what you're saying.
Or, or what I think might be the point here of, you know, in the case of, let's call it this twenty acre PUD, it's not going to be subdivided, so it doesn't have any other, you know, statutory time restriction on it. I understand your point of like, you know, we get the first five or seven acres built, then two thousand eight, two thousand nine happens again, and what happens to the other thirteen acres? You know, and, and doesn't sit there for then ten or fifteen years with a half-built PUD. You know, I certainly understand that concern. And I guess, you know, Jen, that might be something, and I'm just riffing here, might be something that, that, you know, we could put in a little bit more detail in each, where A, we talked about multi-phase projects, you know, you could say something there about they have to have a timeline, and then also, I would say, um, you know, i- in the E, the project narrative, um, where it talks about, you know, it might be goals and strategies of the growth policy, we could, we could implement something there, include some language there into the project narrative that talks about, you know, how the, the project will be constructed and phased over time.
How would that fit with the abandonment?
I was gonna say, that's covered under abandonment, I think, because it says, if it doesn't require subdivision, um, it, you have to provide the completion schedule, right? That's part of the approved, the approved thing. So if they're not following that, that's where I think that, that covers that part. Um, if they're not following their approved completion schedule, um, or uh, the, the annual progress reports, um. There's, eh, there's supposed to be annual progress reports, and I think, let me make sure, because I said, I think the original code I looked at said that we were gonna verify that they were doing this and, and being a one-person show. I said, no, they're gonna, we're, we're not, it's not like I'm gonna have twenty PUDs I'm trying to track in one year. So, I mean, I can, you know, as soon as it's approved, I could stick that on my calendar, like, here's my one-year mark, and then make sure that, you know, everything is not a hundred percent guaranteed, but I'm, I'm, we have enough people going around, building inspectors, people driving around to realize if something's getting done, if they're working on it or not. So I, I'm not, I'm not super concerned about that, and it, it does say, like, they have to identify for phase development, the, the scheduling of that, how the, the year's kind of what it looks like, and I'm not saying they can't maybe have a range of, you know, whatever, six to ten months or something, for one. Um, but I, I would think that's acceptable, but, um, to say how they're gonna develop, what it's gonna look like. So on that site plan, here's where phase one is gonna be, what we discussed, here's where the break lines are for this. So it really is the phasing completion schedule. And if they're not making that timeline, if they were supposed to hit on phase three, you know, uh, six months, twelve months after the completion of phase two, and like Grant said, something happened to the market or whatever, um, then that's when, you know, they, they need to give us that, that, that annually, you know, there'll be a date every year that we get a report. Um, but it's in the developer's best interest to come in and say, hey, something's happening, we can't do this because you don't wanna risk having to go through all this and then having to start to develop it, and then we're just like, sorry, you ran out of time, like you didn't tell us, I would maybe that's altruistic of me, but I, I would think that they would want to get that on our radar as soon as possible to, to work out how that's gonna be, the timeline is amended or extended.
And in fact, I would often, they will, they'll have the economic incentive to, because if they don't, you know, it reverts back to that base.
Yeah, they would have to come through all of it again. So, yes, so, um, does that kind of?
Yeah, I, I apologize for not remembering the abandonment area.
No, 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 I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm a lot easier when I have Ctrl F here to kind of hit my points, but we just, I distilled this down basically late last week from, I think we were at thirteen pages to five to try to make it to. So it was a little clearer, we had some of the, the more specifics and, and, and the formulaic thing with the table, but to, to, it was, was getting a little in the weeds just for the ordinance part, so. So, um, do we want to recap, I can recap the things that we kind of discussed about adding or mending. Do you want me to kind of list that of what I marked, or do you wanna?
Sure, that's fair. I'm a little unclear as to whether I guess our choices at the moment, it's like, we can approve it with the changes and not see it again, and it goes off to the commission, is that correct? Or we can ask for changes and review it again and then send it off to the commission?
Uh, yes, you know, I certainly, I, I would offer, if, if you folks would like to have this come back to you, um, you know, my preference might be to do so in a special meeting in, in like a week or two, as opposed to leading a, a, another month. Just because, uh, you know, time is a little bit of the essence in this one, and, and I do know the commission's pretty excited to see this.
Understood. The other thing I would just bring forward, and it's not, not in the ordinance, it's more of a policy thing we had discussed with, with planning board. And I think it makes sense, um, you know, so this is on my radar, this is sort of my responsibility to make sure this happens, but we were going to bring this back to, you know, the adopted ordinance, back to the planning board for their thoughts after a year, and say, where's the concern? Like, if we haven't figured it out, just to get input on, hey, maybe we need to tweak this a little, maybe we need to put this over here. And it is a zoning ordinance, so I'm thinking about it, of course it should come back, but it's more of a sort of like a check-in. Um, at, at a place I've worked, we've sort of done that, like where, especially, I mean, this is a big change. This is a completely new section of chapter thirty, that's the first time we've done this, so, um, it's the first time I'd done this, so, um, I think it, it makes sense if you're okay with that. So like, basically what I'm trying to say is, this is not etched in stone for the next hundred years. Now, we wanna get it as right as we can, but I think there's, there's some room for minor tweaks. So I guess I would say if you think that for the most part, if there's nothing glaring standing out, that, that you think this is a good starting point, then you might just wanna consider that. This is definitely, I mean, the zoning code, you know, you, you can, you can bring forward, you know, I, I don't wanna be mending it all over the place, and the other thing, that's why I'm saying this, um, we are gonna be having that zoning code overhaul, the, the complete hiring consultant, getting somebody in to The the complete hiring consultant, getting somebody in to to look at all of chapter thirty and and, um, and, uh, I think it's parts of chapter two that have site plan review, everything that that are in there. Um, this will be part of that review too. To make sure if just best practices around the country or or something that is new and different, or even in Montana, you know, that consultant's gonna be able to say, hey, you know, others are kind of looking at this, and it seems to have worked out well. And Bozeman just kind of tweaked their P U D ordinance, and they're calling it something else now, but you know, this is after reviewing several of them and kind of seeing what worked, what didn't. So just that that is totally not even an option. It's going to happen that that this is looked at by, you know, a a code professional, that that's what they do for a living, which, you know, I I've done the best I can, but and 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 we do want a lot of input, but I have not been writing code for fifteen years. Um, so that's one place it's going to get looked at and to bring it back to you and the planning board after a year. You know, just to see what the thoughts are, how it's working.
Did Jim have any comments or thoughts?
Jim was heavily involved in this last minute edits last week. Um, yes. Um, so we tried, and especially because he knows the code inside and out and the and the the a lot of the legal sticking points and with and with the state. So yes, he has read through all of this. Um, and has, and he read it again, because I sent it out on Sunday. I sent him a copy of what I sent it out on Sunday. And and he said it all. There's nothing that he's identifying now, again, when the attorney looks it over, but I to know this stuff, so yes.
And I will say, the attorney has reviewed this already, uh, once, and did not have any, I I've said, John.
Oh, I didn't know. Alright, um. Yeah, so I think I think we're we're covered there.
So you were going to mention a brief list of what we.
Of the things that that, yes, so, um. One of them was on my PowerPoint, which I don't want to try to pull up again, because I'm scared I'm going to crash the whole thing. So one of them was to add under the incentives and public benefit, just the table clarification language, and I think we can be general with that, um, to to clarify that that the height increase and the impact fee reduction incentives are one time only. Um, so that was one. One was uh, to add something about, um, is it just for phase developments, performance bonds for public benefits that are not constructed in the initial phase, but will be covered in the future? Again, language to be um, wordsmithed by others. Um, unless you have it, since I'm not, I think he's talking about something we already have elsewhere, and so we're just going to use that language. And then there was one other one, but I'm not. Do you remember? Thank you. That was the key one. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So the third one is for the review. Yeah, so so, yes. Both of these. So I think we've covered. Yeah, it's, um, under review procedure, it would be, um, the first thing, basically, like after, um, a a complete application, um, after the city is is has accepted an application, it's moving forward in the review process, but prior to any public hearing, um, the, uh, the P U D needs to, yeah, there needs to be a work session, um, available for public comments, um. Yes, and I don't, uh, we may not even have to put that in there, but that that's that might be more of a policy thing. However, the language needs to happen. But yes, that is the intent that it is. That is a Q and A for the general public and for advisory boards and the city commission. It would just be a listening session, but it's all as one. So we have sort of those two public input points. So I'm so glad, because that was pretty important. Um, so basically, the work session language, as we discussed, I'm just going to say, under the review procedures to to make that simple-ish. So I think those are the three things. Is that Wendy? Do you remember anything else? Anybody else?
There was one other. It was the bonuses needed to be spread out equally over all the phases, the bonus.
Yes, um.
However you wanted to phrase that.
Yes, um, I I and that's, that is different than the performance bond thing. Impact fees. And, uh, I think we can use language and kind of to be determined is is the bonuses need to be constructed, um. Just had it lost it, um. It really is the public benefit and the and the bonus need to be sort of tied to each other when they're constructed, when they're given. And I'm not, can you think of language? I'm I'm sorry, brain's gone. So to ensure that if somebody is getting the height increase, and they're basing that on the twenty percent of park space. And maybe it's only height increase. Bonus and incentives have to be, uh, developed uh, proportionally.
My only, my, yeah, just.
Bring it.
Yeah, um, if if that, I think, works very cleanly on the density and on the the impact, um, bonus, but on the height increase bonus, I could just thinking through developments, right? If if we had called a three-phase process, right? And and so we had R two on either side of the P U D, but there was a three-phase process for the P U D, and and that was essentially to step up from R two to that, you know, taller structure in the middle, you know, but buffer it with with, you know, kind of mid height on the sides. That we wouldn't be spreading that height bonus proportionately across the development, because we would be intentionally buffering. So that would be.
The only problem I think that would be is if they wanted to develop the center first. But my guess is you're probably going to develop the outside infrastructure first, right?
But it it just, it's, there could be a situation where that bonus would not be spread proportionately across the development or spread uniformly across the development, because you would in fact maybe be concentrating that that. Just trying to pick.
That makes sense. Benefit develop. Proportionally, or or we just say that it, but and then we during the completion schedule that they they're presenting and how they're going to phase it, we just say it has to be developed proportionally. And again, word smithing, but we'll look at that as it's an P U D is going through and say, that doesn't make sense. You're proposing to do all this here, but you want the benefit or you want the incentive and the bonus now. So I think that can is just an extra thing to kind of be aware of and and maybe after doing one or two of these, we realize we need to be a little clearer. We can tweak that language, I think. But I that I think that's what you're getting at, right? Stacey is the proportionality of the the developer bonuses to the public benefit.
Yes, and it was just one of the comments that you were all discussing at that time and and explaining the differences. And so whether it's just a a a comment that you put in there or as a as a wording to remember, um, but it is probably important. Whether you put it specifically into the ordinance or not.
No, I agree. I actually think it should be mentioned in the ordinance. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it'd be worth some notes like that under the table.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got, um, the language about kind of making it clear the one time only height and impact fee bonuses. Um, they can't triple up on those. Um, the bonus benefit is to be developed proportionality, some sort of language about that. Um, add the language about the work session that's required after, uh, the review process starts, but before a public hearing is held. And then, um, something about in the for phase development, performance bonds for public benefits that aren't all given in the first phase. I think those are the four things that that we all discussed to add in here. Beyond the original staff recommendation. So that am I hitting it? Getting all the highlights here? Let the record show that Michael nodded his head in agreement. Um, okay, well, then if that's, and that's if you're ready to move forward, then I would say you could ask for a motion. With those.
With those changes.
With those changes.
Motion.
I if I they typically do. There's one and four. You gotta somebody, somebody can start it.
Uh, great, so let's see here. Addition to the zoning or addition to the zoning with the changes as noted and discussed here.
Uh, you you would recommend to the commission to to, um, so it's a, so. Okay. That'll cover it.
And I have a second motion.
I'll second that.
Great, and we vote?
Great, passed unanimously. Okay, she said I, okay. You guys are awesome. I, um, I'm gonna go ahead and stop this. Thanks, Wendy. Thanks, Stacy. Thanks, uh, other person. Yeah. Uh, well, yeah, I think. Um, I know that's, um, actually comments from you guys. Do you have any comments? Yes.
Are there any other, like, more like maybe than us, are there any other things that we've passed in the past couple of years that we I look back at? Like A D one, it's one. I was just curious.
You mean, like, brought back for an evaluation?
Yeah, just like we mentioned this one. I was actually more most curious about the A D ordinance, if that was been used at all or.
No, there's been some changes at the state that are gonna change our code on A D U's.
Okay.
Um, the legislature, um, has, uh, approved basically, and the governor has signed, I think it's when he has to sign, um, that A D U's will be allowed in all zoning districts where residential development is allowed. Um, we can know. Do you want to go there? There's something else. There's. Yeah, it well, so we, yes, and that will come, any changes brought about or are necessitated because of what happened in the legislature are going to have to come through zoning, because there are text amendments. Um, the other one, just for you to be aware of, is, um, and again, this is nothing we can do about it. This is, this is from the state. Uh, duplexes will now be allowed in our one districts. Duplexes are allowed in all residential zoning districts. I think those are the two ones that.
I think those are the only two that impacted us. They made some changes to the lot sizes.
That didn't really mess with us. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, and those will, as soon as I can get this through, um, we're 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 get down plan down, I'm saying moving forward. Um, I've already talked to Jim Woodall about that last week is to kind of figure out, there's some start dates. One was an immediate start date, and then there's some that are, was it January, November? Yeah, I have them written down. We identified the ones that are going to change it affect changes to our code and when they're required to be enacted, and we're just going to kind of compile it and bring them through all at once. Um, and they're for your review, but it's it's kind of like we have to say, yes. Um, yeah.
To vote on as an overlay district?
To us a week or so ago, and I believe that all of that.
Guidelines? We have large format retail. I didn't know if it was the overlay, but yeah, but I think that was done before me. Okay, that was before me, so.
Is there, I guess I'm curious about how we adopt. I thought one of our missions at one point was to kind of adopt the.
The gateway overlay for the entrance to the towns, that one?
Yeah, and start applying those design guidelines to other areas.
So I think that that's all, it's it's honestly, it's more than 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 I can do. And because we have like, uh, somebody that this is their specialty is code, all of that's going to be looked at. And again, the thing that they're going to be able to do is instead of, I think, just because of limited staff resources, a lot of things have sort of been brought as they as they come up in peace and and kind of in a piecemeal fashion, which is sometimes how it has to be done, but my my goal is with this review by an outside consultant is is it's it's kind of a holistic thing. So here's the growth policy. Here's what your growth policy is. Now we got to look at the code and figure out where it doesn't align with this. How we have to change it. And if the growth policy, again, I think you're referring to something growth policy is about, like, the gateway overlay zone is in, I think, for future land use. That's all going to be looked at. And I would just I'm I'm hoping that rather than than do too many adjustments to the zoning code now in piecemeal, if we can kind of wait on that. Um, now that doesn't, you know, I.
Yeah, something.
Uh, I I hear you. Um. Yeah, no, we 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 I agree with that. And again, for larger projects, they have to go through site plan review anyway. Um, now, there's not really design standards in that, but there's definitely, you know, more of a look at, um, you know, parking, um, landscaping, the, uh, even even, um, having detention, which typically is going to be kind of a grassy area for parking lots um, that are over a certain size. So there's some sorts of things we can look at with that, but. Yeah.
I I would just say the the large or max retail. And so it's about well over two years ago. The restrictions on the twenty thousand.
Is it twenty or thirty?
Oh, really? We're all waking up from the pandemic. Was that the, was that happening? Was the pandemic March of twenty one?
Twenty. 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 Yeah, March sixteenth, I think, was that Friday? Those are shut down, holes. I mean, it was like take your monitors, take anything you want for the, and we were starting our staff like, oh, for the next few months. It was, they closed all county buildings for like a year and a half.
Wow.
Um, so if that's it, then I would say, um, I don't think you need to call for a motion, but if you don't have any more board comments, just you need to adjourn the meeting initially. At seven twenty eight. Thanks, guys. Sorry, this ran a little.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's patience. I'm.